Let us know when we're ready to go.
Tim, are we still asking them to call into that same number, the number that's on our Agenda packets to get onto this meeting, or do they have a different number to get onto the Zoom?
The number that's on tonight's Agenda packet starts with the 408.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting into order. This is a conference meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live on Montclair TV 34 YouTube channel. It is available on demand and can be and will be rebroadcast. In an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and to maintain social distancing practices, this July 7 Township Council meeting and further meetings until the pandemic is over will only be available to the public remotely. Those who wish to participate now in public comment should dial in to 408-418-9388, 408-418-9388. When asked to enter the access code, please enter 129-285-9163.
Amy Folks has left the meeting.
Then press the number sign. When asked to enter an attendee number, again, press pound and simply press pound.
Laura Torcio has joined the meeting.
Please state your name and then press pound. The administrator will say it's the caller's turn to speak, and the caller will hear two beeps. At that time, the caller will have the opportunity to make his comment. So for those of you watching at home, you'll see we're doing this via Zoom tonight for a number of reasons. Mr. Stafford can talk about those in just a little bit. So it's a new format that we're using.
May Carmichael has joined the meeting.
Now, I'll ask this to the United States of America, which is one nation. One nation with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you do please do the roll call?
Mayor Spiller.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock.
Present.
Counselor Cummings.
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams.
Present.
Counselor Russo.
Present.
Counselor Schlegler.
Here.
Counselor Yakubellis.
Present.
I will now open it up for public comment. Mr. Fan, Mr. Stafford, I will leave it to you to manage those lines.
Thank you, Mayor. What I would ask folks on the line or who soon will be on the line for public comment is that you please do us the service, please. It is critical that you do us the service of muting the devices on which you are listening to or watching this meeting. It is critical, otherwise we will get feedback and delay. So, the first caller, it is your turn to speak. Please state your name and make your comment. Make your comment. Make your comment.
Who's turn is it?
Caller with the number 201-543. Who's turn is it? Caller with the number 201-543.
How do we know who's first?
Okay, this is 201-543-1661.
Ma'am, it's your turn, please.
Yes, my name is Ann Lappel, and I'm the Chair of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. I want to congratulate you all on your recent election. We have many challenges ahead, and we are confident that under the current leadership, we will be able to face those challenges. One piece of unfinished business left over from last administration had to do with the negotiations between the United Way and the township to establish a community center at the Mills Building on South Fullerton near the Montclair Public Library. We urge you to bring those negotiations to a conclusion.
Corinna Steger.
The comprehensive community center in this location will enhance the township, reinvigorate the bid, and satisfy a commitment made to our seniors more than a decade ago. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Fan, before Mr. Stafford calls out the next person, can you please mute all participants? I think we, as a council, can unmute ourselves when we're ready to speak, and certainly you can unmute the next individual to go, but can you please mute all participants so that we have less feedback? Thank you, and go ahead, Mr. Stafford. Thank you.
You bet. Caller with the number beginning in 973-941. Please state your name and make your comment.
My name is Amy Folks.
Caller with the number beginning in 9.
And I'm calling.
Yes, ma'am, yes, Ms. Folks, it's your turn.
Yes, I'm just calling. First of all, I want to say congratulations to everyone that has been elected to serve, and thank you for your service. I'm calling to, first of all, mention the June 29 incident where there was a phone call to the police with a false allegation, thought that it would be appropriate for Montclair to adopt its own ordinance against making false reports to 911. Our emergency services have enough on their plate right now without having to deal with this kind of non-community type of attitude. So I just want to encourage you guys and urge you guys to seriously consider coming up with an ordinance against false police reporting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Has left the meeting.
Mayor May I?
Has left the meeting.
Please, thank you, Mr. Stafford, next.
Well, we certainly appreciate the thought, and the township would be, I believe, precluded and preempted by state statute that is on point. Certainly, I would defer to the township attorney. However, I believe New Jersey statute 2C:28-4 would preempt the township passing such an ordinance. On the other hand, it would cover, I believe, exactly what the gentle lady was talking about with respect to filing false reports to law enforcement authorities and certainly wasting precious time.
And thank you, Mr. Stafford, and as a note, this is also an issue that the state legislature, I know, is continuing to look at during these times.
Caller with the number beginning in 973-233. You are next up to comment. Please state your name and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Corinna Steger.
John.
Congratulations to all of them, to all of you. I just want to quickly talk about the fact that I really feel that we are in relatively dire straits where it comes to our businesses and our restaurants, and I really would like for you to consider closing some streets, not Bloomfield Avenue, but there are certain other alternatives, and I feel that this town, which is so incredibly important and where restaurants make up so much of our lives really, that we're not giving them the support that we need.
Okay.
I'm hoping that you will, that you will, I know there's already been things done. I know that they are, you know, the permit fees have been waived, but in reality, the vast majority of them need some kind of additional space, and there are solutions that can be done. A part of Church Street is like a no-brainer. A part on Wachang is a no-brainer, and none of that has happened. And I am German originally, and when it comes to pedestrian zones, we know a thing or two, and I find it stunning, and I've lived here for, I don't know, almost 20 years, that this is not possible, and I really, really wish that you could come up with a solution because we don't want to see any more aborted-up storefronts, which we had for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. And I'll ask Mr. Stafford to further comment on these in a moment, but first, I do want to note that I think certainly this council has been moving forward in partnership with the business community to address a lot of the pieces that you know, yes, in terms of waiving permit fees, which of course is a big piece, but also in terms of initial parking to allow for pull-up, drop-off, pickup, et cetera. Additionally, which no other town has done, offering a $150,000 grant program for local businesses here in town, which is unprecedented to alleviate some of the costs that our businesses are bringing. Further, to your point of closing streets, we have been in constant communication with the Business Improvement District and Business Improvement Districts throughout and business associations throughout our township. When you note Church Street, which seems like a no-brainer, I have to smile, I think all of us would agree, of course, and until you're looking at the backend things, which are, that a number of businesses there need deliveries that have to go down Church Street, so then how do you close the street and open the street? Okay, it may not seem as hard, but then you talk about putting an officer there to do that work. What are the costs associated with that? And then when you start adding it up over the time and the number of weekends, it becomes cost prohibitive, then it's looking into can a barrier be placed there? How do you go about doing that? How do you get that barrier? How do you add it and then remove it? Who does that? What are the vehicles needed? What type of barriers are needed to be safe, et cetera? What are the hours that are closed that accommodate these deliveries and then can have the barrier moved and put back? I can tell you that we, again, and Mr. Stafford, and I know Mr. Herlock has been part of these conversations, you know, it is not quite that easy. It in fact has been the Business Improvement District that has asked us to hold off on doing some of these closures the last couple of weekends, and that literally has been because they're also doing their due diligence to make sure liability issues are covered on their part and our part, and also to make sure that some of these openings and closings can be done, but also done in a way that isn't cost prohibitive for our businesses to start eating up those very needed grant dollars that we put forward, or also for the township so we don't keep incurring more and more costs, which we know are borne by the taxpayers. So even some of the things that seem more simple are a little bit more complicated, but I agree. All of that to say that progress is being made. I think something around those closures should happen pretty soon. Kudos to the Business Improvement District and others for working with us and the police and others to make that happen and to figure out a way to do it cost-effectively that meets the needs. So a lot around that, and Mr. Stafford, if there's something I missed you'd like to add, please do so.
I don't have anything to add, Mayor. You've covered everything I would have said.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford.
Caller with the number ending in or starting with 973-477. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name and make your comment, 973-477.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, my name is Colleen Martinez, and first of all, I want to congratulate each of you on your election. I am also calling with regard to the recent incident where a resident made a call to the police falsely alleging that her black neighbor had assaulted her, and I am aware that we already have laws saying that it is not okay to make false reports to 911. I'm asking you to consider doing something like New York City did.
Tess Fizeme has joined the meeting.
And as you probably know, in New York City, it's now considered a hate crime when somebody makes a false police call based on race. So I think it's important that we point out that this was specifically an incident that was about race, and I think it's important for the Town Council to make some efforts to show how important it is that we are going to protect our black neighbors and stand up for them. Thank you.
Do you want me to say something, Mayor, on this?
Colleen Martinez has left the meeting.
I just wanted, this is Ira Karasik on the Township Attorney. The manager was correct when he spoke earlier that the state law against false reporting, and there are hate crime laws as well, is specifically and expressly preempt municipalities from adopting ordinances. So no matter how concerned the council is, and I guarantee they're concerned, they can't adopt the kind of ordinance they're looking for. And I can tell you that I was 18 weeks on the grand jury last year, and there were many indictments for false reporting that I recall, so it's not exactly something I just let go. So I appreciate your concern, but we just can't do it. That's all.
Thank you.
Caller with the number starting in 973-723. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name and then make your comment, 973-723.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, first, I want to say congratulations and welcome to the new council, and thank you all for your service in this great town. My name is Laura Torcio. I'm a resident, parent, and active community champion in this town that I love so much. Professionally, I'm a certified planner specializing in active transportation, healthy communities, and placemaking, and for over 20 years, I volunteered my professional credentials to the Montclair Arts Planning Committee, the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee, the Pedestrian Safety Committee, the Master Plan Reexamination, Montclair Design Week, and of course Bike and Walk Montclair, which most of you know me from. I'd like to make a comment in light of current events and how public space, streets in particular, play a critical role. Montclair's streets are for everyone. Streets as public space play a critical role in COVID recovery for business, for health, and for well-being for everyone. Our neighbors in Princeton, those who are simply open, and they have many of the recommendations in their pedestrian plan to take advantage of the lockdown to test their ideas for better biking and walking outlined in the plan and mandated by their Complete Streets Policy. While Princeton and other towns similar to Montclair like Matatchin, Asbury Park, Ridgewood, Red Bank, Rutherford, and more are rearranging their streets per their bike head plans, Montclair's Safe Streets Are For Everyone Complete Streets Implementation Plan has been stalled with the Planning Board for three years. I understand the town is helping businesses reopen by waiving sidewalk cafe permit fees, providing grant funds, and working to close some streets during certain hours. This is a start, and we can do more by adopting and implementing our own vetted plan. Now I hear that the Planning Board is looking to bifurcate the plan and move ahead with pedestrian recommendations, but is once again stalling the recommendation for bicycling. As we learned from Bike and Walk Montclair's recent community survey and candidate forum, which many of you participated in, our community and our Town Council desire reimagined streets. My concern is that people who bike for transportation as well as recreation will continuously get pushed aside the longer the plan sits with the Planning Board. We have an implementation plan in place with recommendations for different street typologies that we could temporarily pilot right now. We even have priority corridors as defined by the public and included in the plan to move forward with. This plan was derived from New Jersey's Complete Streets Implementation Guide and helped to develop the more recent Green and Complete Streets Guide. I'd like to ask council to take action to implement this plan now when we need it most. We want safe streets for everyone, not just those who drive to get out of their car or those who get out of their cars and walk. We want safe streets for kids, seniors, people of all abilities and all modes, including people who bike. Or at the very least, I'd like council to implement a Complete Streets Commission whose charges to work with the municipal and county engineers to implement the Complete Streets Plan thoughtfully, strategically, and responsibly. Thank you. Again, this is Laura Torcio from Bike and Walk Montclair.
Thank you.
With the number beginning in 973-783. It is your turn to speak. Please state your name and make your comment.
Hi, this is Norma Patsy. I am your neighbor at Seven Southern Terrace, and I would like to first comment that thank you very much for your service and congratulations to the newly elected council members. I'm sure that there's, I'm sure that there's a lot of good times ahead for all of us in this town. I too am calling and am very concerned with the recent happenings on June 29th where one neighbor used, weaponized the police against another by foiling a false racially motivated 911 call. I'm also calling to ask that the town look at what can be done in light of the information that our town attorney is sharing. I would like to, I would like to suggest that, and I'm wondering if filing a false police report and using the 911 emergency system are the same thing. In most towns, in what I understand from New York, that's not the case, and what I'd like to see is a penalty for falsely using the 911 system and not for making a false police report. I think it's imperative to keep our neighbors of color, our neighbors with physical and mental limitations, our neighbors who are part of the LGBTQ community safe and protected from unwanted police harassment. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. I heard a question, Mr. Karasik, could you please, for the caller, distinguish, is there a distinction as per the question?
I don't believe there's a distinction between a 911 and the false reporting. I think it's all false reporting, but I will check the state statutes and see if there's any specific statutes regarding 911. However, with respect to the issue of whether or not we can adopt an ordinance, either ordinance, whether it refers to 911 or false reporting, would be preempted by the state criminal code. And I should say that while New York City is a good analogy for some things, they operate in a totally different legal framework. There, it's just in New Jersey, towns, what we can do and not do are very different from what New York can do. These are the New York State and what its own home rule powers are. So the analogy really doesn't hold in cases of...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Karasik, and I think certainly something we do want to emphasize, and for those of you to see my interview on Channel 11, we certainly are in agreement in terms of inappropriate weaponizing or abuse of a system. You're hearing from my township attorney what we may be limited by, but know that, you know, certainly we are certainly focused on this and, you know, are as upset as anyone else that this would happen in Montclair. But even as I said that day, also really pleased with how our community has responded. When you watch that tape and you watch further on, you saw how neighbors and others responded, and certainly our community as a whole. I think that's what speaks to our character. So again, we have some legal limitations, but I think some things are beyond the law, and that really is about our character, and I think Montclair has shown itself to have good character in this regard. Mr. Stafford?
Thank you, Mayor. Caller with the number starting in 646-763. It is your turn to comment, 646-763. Please state your name and then make your comment.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Week 10, sir.
Hi, John Sullivan, 19 Euclid Place, currently President Bike and Walk Montclair. I definitely want to congratulate the council and also thank them for their current work on allowing Church Street to move forward with future closures. I've been working closely with Design Week on that, and I think that's going to be a spectacular addition to the downtown. In addition to what Torcio said, which we second, I also want to put emphasis on the need to address residential streets. While I know the immediate focus is tendency to focus on business districts economically, the first thing that technically comes up is the lack of parking, and I want to stress how addressing residential streets with bike and walk infrastructure is a way to get people to the downtowns without cars, and I think this is a perfect time to take the Fed Safe Plan and actually pilot and demonstrate some of these streets that can get people to our business districts without a car rather than trying to find more spaces to put cars. So I think they really work in conjunction with one another, and I think that's something that we can do right now. It doesn't have to be these permanent things. We can try some temporary demonstration things this summer to show what it could be like to have not just a church street that is closed in a wonderful place, but a network that you can get there without always having to think, where can I put my car when I get there? And I look forward to hearing what the current new council thinks, and also what the Planning Board will address the biking and walking safety components together as one in the Safe Plan and not tease them out because there is fear that if one component is passed, it'll further delay the other. Thank you.
Caller with the number starting in 917-916. You're up next to comment, 917-916. Please state your name and make your comment.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can, ma'am. We can, ma'am.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, my name is Elle, and I am calling to back up Laura Torcio and Bike and Walk Montclair and John Sullivan as to the need to establish bike lanes at this point and not delay it any further, and I am frankly angry that the policy has been split and destabilized, and now is the time to do it. If you've been out, you see that there are people who are on bikes, who have baskets on those bikes, who are using them for transportation. This is an opportunity to address climate change and not to be hypocritical about this, and I'm encouraging you, I'm certainly not the only one, and I'm strongly encouraging this forward, and specifically the members of the board who said that they would put in bike lanes, specifically Bob Russo and Yakobellis, Peter Yakobellis. You said you were putting in bike lanes before the election, and we are watching to see what the board does. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Can I answer?
Caller.
Can I answer?
Councilman Russo, please.
Can you hear me? Yes, yes.
We can hear you, sir.
I'm not sure who the caller was. I really, I don't know what her name was, really. I'm totally in favor of everything we could possibly do to get off of cars and fossil fuel and gasoline. That's been my life, okay? When I was mayor, we started having natural gas vehicles. We had sixes in the first community to have natural gas vehicles. We tried to promote biking. I'm not a biker myself, but I believe in biking. When you say that I said I'm going to do this, and you say the board, it's not a board, it's the councils, the governing body, it's the Council of Montclair. So understand, there's seven members, and we have to come to a consensus and agree it takes four votes to do anything. You mentioned me, I can't speak for Peter, whatever he wants to say, or anybody else, but my spirit is there, my support is there conceptually, but you have to do things in a practical way, be able to actually do them and implement them, and you need the majority support to do them. So I'm just saying to you, maybe you want to call me, 973-567-9397. We'll talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I hear Mr. Karasik, you were trying to speak as well?
I was just going to say, Mayor, that I just, while we're sitting here, I looked up the statute on false reporting, and there's a specific section on 911 calls. So.
Okay, so it is preempted. Okay, thank you for that insight for the previous caller. Thank you.
Caller with the number starting in 201-320. It's your turn to make a comment, 201-320. Please state your name and make your comment.
Good evening, this is Tess Fizeme, and I'm a resident homeowner in the Third Ward. I've been a resident of Montclair since 2011, at which point we had a grocery store in the Lackawanna Plaza area, and I'm calling to welcome in the new board. Congratulations. However, I think that that has been a point of contention. However, I think that that has been a point of contention for the Third and Fourth Ward specifically. I think it's been grossly neglected. And I'd like to see what the belief or planning is behind committing to what was offered or proposed. In 2015, when Pathmark closed, a shuttle was provided to those who didn't have transportation, to the seniors in the wards. That shuttle has since ceased. We were promised by the owner of the Lackawanna Plaza property and Pinnacle Company that a grocery store would be put in place within an 18 to 24 month period. And here we are, five years later, and nothing has been replaced. I think that it's a commitment that the town needs to hold on to and fulfill. I understand in 2019, it was announced that a Lidl would be brought into the space, but I have not heard much more beyond that. And I'd like to know a solid understanding as to when we can expect a grocery store in that space. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your question and probably more, more time than we even have on here to kind of go through all the iterations of this. But first and foremost, I will say, as a Third Ward resident myself, someone who lives right by that shopping center, I certainly was a frequent user of the Pathmark and would want nothing more than a supermarket in that location. The process as it unfolded was on a number of levels. Number one, first, the township was involved to try and incentivize the developer, as they've exchanged hands to a new owner, to put in a supermarket in that location and come up with specifications as what that, what that would look like. The owner of the property, over the time, pulled back from working on any redevelopment plan and really said, we are going to build what we are allowed to build, basically under the laws that currently exist, you know, at that time. They moved forward in that way. As you note, they were able to come in and say, not the bigger supermarket, like a ShopRite or something else, that we were originally envisioning on the township side. As part of that process, when we were involved, they said, we're going to put in a Lidl. And as you noted, maybe gave some timeframe. I can't comment on if they did or didn't. Since that happened, though, they have been sued by a number of individuals who are challenging some of the historic preservation components of the project. And the issue has been tied up in litigation. So whatever promises they may or may not have made, certainly whatever timeframe they gave, that gets put on hold once it's in the courts, and that's where it has been. So that has been the delay there. And once that is adjudicated, then it would likely be some action in that area. So unfortunately, the township, you know, we do not own that property. We cannot dictate specifically what goes there. But you did note that the owners had given a commitment to doing some type of supermarket. The timeframe was then thrown off around the historic preservation components and the arguments over that that ensued. So that's the, the short answer. Certainly, there's a, you know, years of meetings at the planning board and other levels to kind of go through and to kind of go through the full story there. But I think that I hope as best summarizes it. And certainly, you know, Mr. Stafford, if there's another piece you'd like to add, please feel free. Thank you.
Once again, Mayor, that was a concise statement. I have nothing to add. Most particularly, you hit the notion of litigation, which I'm sure has delayed any action on the part of the, the owner and developer. Beyond that, I have nothing to add. Caller with the number beginning with 347-268. It is now your time, turn to comment. Please state your name and make your comment.
Hi, I'm Stacy Charmack, and I live at 33 Sixth Avenue in the Second Ward. And I'm calling, by the way, thank you to, and welcome to the new council members. And thank you to those of you who have been on the council for quite a while. And thank you for your service and sticking with us. I'm calling not only with regard to the June 29 incident. I'd just like to say that we can't pretend that this is a new issue, right? I mean, that was an incident that really brought this to the forefront. And social media has, of course, helped this reach a lot more Montclarians than perhaps other incidents like this, you know, may not have traveled that far that quickly and therefore didn't get as much attention. But I'd like to speak up for my neighbors and friends who have had trouble with false reporting, calls, you know, to 911. That, I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback. I can't tell if you can hear me. I'm hearing myself. You can hear me, okay?
We can hear you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just hearing myself a little. So I would just, I, and, and of course, each of those incidents, if they were investigated, you know, I'm not sure of all the details. But I do know that people I care about who've lived in this town for a long time have encountered this before. And I really do appreciate the, you know, information, education provided by, especially Mr. Karasik. I, I understand the state level issue, you know, the town ordinances and such. But, Chris, you may take a minute. Excuse me. But I also just think it's important from a practical, you know, executing this kind of level for people to know what their rights are and people to know exactly what to do and what to reference if these things happen. It can be a very charged situation when this happens to someone. Several police cars are arriving, and it's very difficult in that situation, even for bystanders. Say this should happen to my next door neighbor. I think it's really important for all Montclarians to understand this, what applies, and to know how to protect ourselves and our, and our friends and neighbors. So I appreciate the new information. I just want to highlight, this is not a new situation. And I think that we all need more clarity moving forward in how this will be dealt with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with the number beginning with 973-424. 973-424. It's your turn to comment. Please state your name and make your comment.
Hi, this is Deirdre Malloy. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, we can hear.
This is Deirdre Malloy. Can you?
Hello?
Awesome, great. Again, this is Deirdre Malloy speaking. I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone who has now joined the council. Mayor Spiller, congratulations. I just wanted to welcome each of you and say, as a housing commissioner, I look forward to working with each of you, supporting whatever agendas make sense to support. I'm available for questions, and you're welcome to attend the Housing Commission meeting. Just give us a heads up so that we can prepare our agenda if you have any concerns or questions. Also, with regard to the landlord tenant housing committee, I just wanted to say that we're excited, and there's lots going on there. Some things will, will be brought to your attention that occurred during the COVID-19 pandemic and executive orders, as well as the municipal ordinances. And that's all I'll say. Looking forward to working with you all. Congratulations again, and welcome back to those of you who have been on the council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Malloy. Caller with the number beginning 973-746. It is your turn to comment, 973-746. Please state your name and make your comment.
Carolyn Luck. Can you hear me?
Ms. Luck, we can hear you. But would you do us the service, please, of muting the device that you're listening with or watching? Because we hear something that happened a few minutes ago because of the delay.
I'm watching on my computer, but I'm talking to you on my phone.
Mute the computers.
So if you would mute, mute the computer, you would do us the service, because then we wouldn't hear everything from a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Are you still with us?
She may be on mute.
Are you still with us, ma'am? Ma'am, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Should I be talking on the phone or on my computer?
I'll, I'll tell you what, just speak on the, on the device that you're speaking with. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Should I speak on the phone?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
This is Carolyn Luck. I've been a longtime resident in Montclair. And I want to congratulate you and wish you good luck during these very difficult times. You have the opportunity to do something that no other council has been able to do. And that is to open a community center for seniors. This has been a long time in coming. We've waited many years for this. We've looked around all other towns, and we see other towns having senior centers with all kinds of services and facilities. And Montclair has not had it. And now we're at the possible time of using the facility in the Mills Building next to the library on South Fullerton. This is an ideal location for a senior center with good parking and adequate space for all of our activities. Five years ago, Aging in Montclair came into existence as a nonprofit organization. And one of our main objectives was to see the establishment of a senior services, a senior building that would provide the services and activities that seniors need. You, as a new council, can make this happen and be the first council to cut the ribbon for a new senior center. You have to do it soon. The plans are there. They're ready to get working in August. And it needs just some final work on your part, and I urge you to do it soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am? Caller with the number starting 973-626. It is your turn to comment, 973-626. Please state your name and make your comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay, so all right, one of my biggest concerns, I, my name is Camisha Colley, and I'm in the Fort Ward in Montclair. And I've been living in Montclair maybe for 13 years so far. And what I noticed, especially on, I see a lot of development being erected in the town, but I'm still waiting for another supermarket to be placed on the, you know, the south end side of Montclair. So I want to know, what exactly are the plans for Lackawanna Plaza? And what are you going to do so that people can afford and actually have the accessibility to supermarkets? And, you know, people who can't drive all the way to ShopRite in Brookdale or afford to go to one of the more expensive supermarkets such as Atni and Hopeful, what are you going to do for those people who can't afford to find these spaces? Because we're still waiting for a supermarket. It's been over five years, and I, and it's very disheartening to see all the structures, all these new buildings, these new condos, new apartments being erected in our town. And we're still waiting for a supermarket. So I want to know, what are you going to do about that?
Well, thank you, ma'am, for your call. And I assume you probably didn't hear the earlier caller with a similar question. I will try and just really briefly summarize some of that again. Unfortunately, on the township side, as you might imagine, we do not own, you know, any of the supermarkets or other pieces that we could, in effect, you know, make come into town. What we have the opportunity to do is through redevelopment agreements, through redevelopment plans, is to incentivize an owner or developer of a specific property to hopefully build what we need here in town, which an example would be the supermarket. We attempted to do that with Lackawanna Plaza. The previous council came up with a redevelopment plan that would do exactly that. The owner of that property decided to move in a different direction, meaning the direction they were allowed to build by right, what was under the law. But they still noted that they wanted to include some type of supermarket. They mentioned a Lidl. But that project has been held up in litigation because of historic preservation concerns. So that is currently what the holdup is on that project. Timeframe as to something moving forward, certainly I won't speak to. I don't think we will, in the sense of they are in litigation, and we can't control, you know, the timeframes around that. So what we can do as a council is to, again, use the power of redevelopment agreement, redevelopment plans to incentivize people to put in the structures we're looking for. We have tried to do that in Lackawanna Plaza. We're hopeful that a supermarket does come in that area, but we are waiting to see what happens. Thank you.
Can I say something? Mr. Karasik, maybe we could get a report in the next couple of weeks on where the lawsuit sits at this time? A lawsuit that, that has been brought against the planning board in this, for the Lackawanna Plaza area? So I have not heard, heard any updates on the planning board side. So maybe you could reach out to the attorney there and give us a little update on the lawsuit?
Counselor Schlegel will be happy to do that. Initially, the township was sued, but I believe we, we were immediately dismissed. So we haven't been a party to the case, which is why I'm not up to date on it either right now. But I will, I will look into it and prepare a report for you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Caller with the number starting in 973-626. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name and make your comment, 973-626.
Hi, yes, Camisha Colley again, from the, the Fort End Ward. I think I got disconnected before. I addressed, I asked one of my questions. My second question is that it's also a lack of bus system for, for the high school children. So I know on the Fort End, we're further enough away from the high school to have a school bus to pick up our children. But I know that nothing is being done about that. So I'm trying to figure out, when do you guys actually have a bus that's going to go to the south end of Montclair, the Fort Ward, and so that we can have our students being bused to the high school? Because that's, I find that to be, you know, a huge issue. So what are the plans for that also?
Thank you for that second question. And I would certainly say, as you might imagine, if you're talking about busing students, that is under the purview of the Board of Education. So certainly, I don't think we'll get ahead of our skis and speak on their behalf. But it's certainly conversations, as we are in these positions, we'll have and ask about what plans are, what the limitations are, what the challenges have been, what the opportunities are to do what you ask, and get more up to speed on that, probably through the Education Committee of the council. But at this time, I certainly do not have a specific answer for you and would not want to speak to one without having a conversation with the Board of Education, because it ultimately will be the Board of Education's decision with regarding to any type of school bus. because it ultimately will be the Board of Education's decision with regarding to any type of school busing that exists. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, the Board of Education currently has a transportation subcommittee that's working on that. And both Mr. Gonzalez, Sergio Gonzalez, and Latipa Jana are members of that subcommittee.
Thank you Deputy Manager Scandari, thank you for that insight.
Caller with the number starting 862-763. It is your turn to comment, 862-763. Please state your name and make your comment.
Hi, so I'm one of the people who emailed last week concerned about Resolution R 20099. I want to first thank the town manager for explaining the specifics of the resolution and answering questions related to it and clearing up a lot of stuff that couldn't be found necessarily on the internet. With that said, I was honestly kind of surprised by some of the comments made by Mayor Jackson and by other members of the council in regard to the concerns of citizens who called and emailed in. Here is just a quote, some quotes that were said in the last council meeting. "While it is certainly appreciated and we've spoken about the atrocity that has occurred in Minneapolis, you have to be careful when we take something that happens in someplace else on a national level and then automatically attribute those characteristics to our own police department. The pushback that some of us received is really geared towards issues that, thank God, we don't really have here. I would encourage anybody to go to the Essex County Prosecutor's Office and find out how many allegations of excessive force, police brutality, anything along those lines associated with the Montclair Police Department. And if you want to save time, I'll tell you the answer is zero. With folks that have raised some issues, I understand where they are coming from and appreciate it. But I think that we have, I think we have problems. We give food away and we don't have enough food to give to folks who are hungry in our township. We have other issues with homelessness. We have some real problems that if we have the energy and the time to solve, we should solve that problem. Essentially, we're trying to solve a problem that I'm not really sure we have." That's the end of the quote. "Many of these issues were sort of reflected and mirrored by other members of the council, some of whom are gathered here tonight, and eventually this resulted in a round of applause." So I just want to say I'm calling in as an individual and not as a member of any group. But the letters and calls from people from various groups and various concerned individuals sent in were not responding to what's going on in Minneapolis or anywhere else. They're responding to what's going on in Montclair. Just one example, the NewJersey.com force report found that in Montclair, a black person is 498% more likely to have force used on them than a white person in this town. A horrible atrocity like police murder shouldn't have to happen in Montclair for us to care about these issues. Instead, we should be focused on how we can ensure that cases of police brutality and excessive force at any level do not happen in our community. And that's what people are calling and emailing responding to. It was expressed in the quote that I read that homelessness and food insecurity are real problems that we should have, that our community should be responding to, as if those issues are not collected, connected to the police budget. They're directly connected. Townspeople are doing a lot through initiatives like Tony's Kitchen and other groups organizing to address these issues. If some of the 16 million that was allocated to the MPD could be allocated to address issues of homelessness and food insecurity, that would be great. So I know not everyone was there at last meeting for this conversation and can't be held accountable for what was said at the meeting that they didn't attend. But this is a new town council and congratulations to everyone on it. I hope that in the future, we can have a real dialogue about these issues and work together about the concerns held by many people in this town and that we won't be dismissed as responding to issues that are happening somewhere else in the country. We are concerned about the Montclair Police Department, racial profiling, use of force, and about the money allocated to them through the town budget. So I'm just hoping going forward, we won't be told that we're concerned about something that's happening somewhere else."
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your comments. And I certainly know that I do speak on behalf of this full council in that I have joined many of my colleagues virtually up here on the dais in a number of community conversations, whether that be those being put forward by the NAACP, other, some progressive groups, civic groups in town, educators. I have seen, you know, every single one of my colleagues on those to engage in those very conversations that you're talking about. So I'm happy that that work is ongoing. Thank you. Mr. Stafford.
Caller with the number starting 973-746. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name and make your comment, 973-746.
Carolyn Lach. Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, we hear you.
I'm sorry about the confusion before. I'm a longtime resident in Montclair. And I first want to congratulate everyone and wish them good luck during this very difficult time. You, as a new council, have an opportunity to do something that no other council has been able to do. And that is to cut the ribbon for a new community senior center. It has been years that we have been waiting for this to happen. Montclair has been the only community around that has not had a senior center. And the seniors in town have been looking for a place that they can get information, have activities and programs. And now we're very close to it. We have, I believe everybody has agreed that the Mills Building on South Fullerton, next to the library, is an ideal place for this center. Renovations are ready to be started. There have been architectural plans. The only limitation now is the completion of agreements with the council. And we hope that you will do this and do it soon. Five years ago, Aging in Montclair started a nonprofit organization to be the voice of seniors. We have been waiting a long time for this to happen. You can make it happen, and I hope you will make it happen soon. I think people are ready to start the renovations in August. So I hope you can move on this quickly. Thank you so much for your interest.
Thank you ma'am. Working through your technology pieces and getting back, thank you.
Mayor, can I say something?
Thank you.
And as the oldest council member at 72, and I've been a friend of Carolyn Lach for years, and I heard Ian Rabel's comment, just want to reiterate that my commitment has always been for this, but it's been a long time working on. And one of our former council members, Roger Tillery, who just ran for council again, has been an longtime advocate for a senior center. How we get that all done is, you know, to be worked out. But I do know and understand her longstanding advocacy for this. So Carolyn, thank you for calling in twice. And I'll tell you, I heard you and I think we're all hearing you and Ian, and we'll try to do our best to move things along. Thank you.
Mayor, there is no one else in the public comment queue.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. With that, I will consider a public comment closed. Mr. Fan, thank you for also working through a new technology piece on short notice, what may be on people unaware at home. There, you know, were some changes here at Town Hall, so it had to go totally remotely. So thank you, Mr. Fan, on short notice to be able to do this and to have us all on, to have the public be able to participate. Certainly that is appreciated. With that, I'll consider public comment closed. Thank you very much. We do have a new ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, we can hear you.
All right. Item A is Ordinance O 2019. And first, Mayor, I'd like to report that the Chief Financial Officer has submitted to the Clerk's office a supplemental debt statement as required by law in connection with the introduction of Ordinance O 2019. Ordinance O 2019 is a bond ordinance of the Township of Montclair, providing for various school capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $4,834,850 in bonds or notes of the township to finance the costs thereof.
Thank you for that, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Stafford, would you speak to this for a moment, please?
Certainly, Mayor. As Ms. Bermudez-Nieve has mentioned, Item A is a bond ordinance providing for the various listed Board of Educational Capital Improvements and authorizing the issuance of $4,834,850 in bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. More particularly, it finances, it would finance masonry improvements to virtually every Board of Education building.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. I also want to give a big thank you to our Deputy Mayor, Hurlock. I know that you're a big part of some of this work here to make sure that we have capital improvements. I know that each one of my colleagues who joined me here tonight has a commitment to making sure that our schools get the capital improvements that they need. I think when you look at the dollar amount that you see here, you see that commitment as we move forward. So I thank you specifically there, Deputy Mayor, and also to all my colleagues for moving forward with this action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments.
Any other, any other council comments on this ordinance?
If I may, Mayor, from what I understand through the materials, is it in under budget that the Board of School Estimate had set aside a certain amount and it's actually going to cost the town a little bit less than that? Is that the distinction in the two different numbers that are reflected in the memo?
Mr. Stafford.
I'm sorry, Ms. Price Abrams, how do you mean?
There was initial dollars that were over $5 million and then the ordinance itself that we're gonna, that we're considering is 4.8. So I just didn't know if it was going to be in under budget of what had been initially approved, which is...
Probably the difference between what we're allowed to borrow and the total cost.
Yeah, I think it's probably exactly that. It's probably the deposit that we're required by state law to put down.
Okay. All good.
Any other council comments? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobellis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. I beg your pardon, Mayor. May I just make one other comment? Ms. Price Abrams, I just saw what you're referring to. It's the difference between $5,396, $396 and $26 and tonight's bond ordinance. The Board of School Estimate, the Board of Education, approved three capital projects. The former governing body passed bond ordinances for the first two. This is the third of three. That's why you're seeing a delta in the numbers. I thought you were referring to the 5% requirement that the township must put down as part of the down payment, but that's not what that is. It's the first two we've already done. This is the third of three. The Board of Education put out bids a certain number of weeks ago. They have 60 days within which to let a contract. This bond ordinance introduced, plus you'll see it at the earliest possible next meeting for second reading. This allows for that contract to be let.
Thank you for the clarification.
Beth.
I have a question. Is the work that's going to be done, the listing of the work, is it fairly generic? That everybody needs masonry work? Nobody needs a new roof? Is it a blanket expense for the schools?
Everything says masonry.
I don't know the particulars. I think the Deputy Mayor may be able to speak to that.
Yeah, I would be happy to, Councilwoman Schlegel. The, there were different types of projects, if you will. So this is masonry and it has to do with the outside stairs at Mount Hebron, now Buzz Aldrin School. So each individual school itself has different masonry needs and that's what this addresses. Not, I mean, there's other categories, as you indicated, you know, for roofing, for other capital projects. This one is specific for masonry and all of the schools are desperate needs of various masonry work on each site.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I'll use that as the opportunity to emphasize what Deputy Mayor noted and Mr. Stafford did. Councilwoman Schlegel, thank you for highlighting in that this isn't the only, these aren't the only dollars we put forward for assisting our schools. So as Councilwoman Price Abrams noted, asked the question that got noted, you know, this is one of many things that we've moved, dollars that we've moved forward to dedicate for that work. That's why this one specifically seems to focus on masonry work, just as a note. And, okay, good. Next, we have our bill list, Councilwoman Schlegel.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas invoices against the Township of Montclair in favor of their, of the following persons for the amounts set opposite their respective names have been received, duly audited and found correct, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Township of Montclair and the County of Essex that said invoices be, and they are hereby ordered paid and that checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order of such persons for the amounts respected and herein after stated on the computer printout attached here to and made apart hereof. This bill list is dated July 7, 2020, to the amount of $6,826,180.31. And I so move.
Second.
The council questions on the bill list. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobellis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Thank you with that. Mr. Stafford, I believe the next items are discussion items, which we will then move forward on our next agenda. So if you don't mind going through each of those items.
Of course, Mayor. Item number one, consistent with NJSA 40A:9-146, would be a resolution reappointing George F. LaBrizzi as the Tax Assessor of the Township of Montclair. Four of you will recall, three of you may know, that Mr. LaBrizzi was appointed by Resolution R 15-158 on October 6 of 2015, for the period of October 6, 2015, until June 30 of 2016, and then again for the period of July 1 of 16 through June 30 of 2020. And this would be a statutory reappointment.
Manager, Mayor, can I just ask a question? Just a question for the members.
Please, go ahead.
This does state that this new appointment, this final appointment that we make on the 21st will grant the assessor tenure in his position. So just for the public and some new council members, I'd like you to explain, Manager, what that means that he would have tenure in his position.
Well, that is a statutory allowance, similar to two other positions in the municipal matrix, the Township Clerk, as well as the Chief Financial Officer. And but for cause, the tax assessor would not be removable from employment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Items 2 through 6 inclusive are grant insertions. And each resolution would serve as the township's request to the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Director of the Division of Local Government Services, to approve the insertion of each grant into the referenced amount as an item of revenue in our 2020 budget and as an appropriation in the same amount. None of these grants have a local match requirement. Item 7, for much of the last decade, communities along the path of the dormant Nine Mile Rail Line from Montclair to Jersey City, known as the Old Booten Line, have rallied for its reuse as a rail trail. The Essex-Hudson Greenway involves just that, its adaptive reuse as a shared use path, connecting people to various destinations and providing a venue to acquire the rail bed and implement the shared use pathway. OSI has a one-year option to acquire the line and it requires adequate resources for transaction and due diligence costs, such as environmental assessments, surveys and trail design. OSI and its partners estimate the need for approximately $2 million to leverage funds for the $65 million purchase price and other costs for redevelopment. Item 7 is a resolution that would authorize a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation under its BikeWay Grant Program. And Item 8 is a resolution that would authorize a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation under its Safe Streets to Transit Program. Neither grant has a local match requirement... Neither grant has a local match requirement and no local funds would be involved.
And Mr. Stafford, I'll just note, it's a good example of an area where I know our freeholder President Brendan Gill, I know all of us here in town have been pushing to see this move forward for a number of years, so we are, are thrilled to see that now a nonprofit with an opportunity to help that bring to realization, and of course, we're happy to do what we can to assist in that manner. So thank you, Mr. Stafford.
If I may ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Sure. So as the managers just explained, we're talking about this $2 million that's part of the additional costs on top of the 65 million. So are the grants actually being pursued for that piece or for the bigger piece, or both?
I believe the grants are being pursued for the 2 million, and if they get enough grants, they may use the excess for part of the purchase price. But candidly, this is on OSI and its partners completely. The only thing the township and the other communities are doing is acting as pass-through for grant funding.
Great, thank you.
Moving to item number nine, it would be a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for a grant in the amount of $6,000 to offset part of the cost to purchase and install one Level Two dual-port vehicle charging station to be installed in our municipal parking lot. The charging station would be installed in two municipal vehicle parking spots. It would be available for public charging of two vehicles during the day with the users paying for electric, and it would be reserved to charge ultimately two township pluggable hybrid vehicles overnight. This grant has a local match. The local match is 40%, and to that point, the estimated cost to purchase and install the vehicle charging station is $10,000. The NJDEP grant, we believe, would fund $6,000, and the township would fund $4,000, and that $4,000 has been accounted for in a previous budget.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. And I think I know, as Councilman Russo always notes, this is a further example of, and give a, please give a thank you to Gray Russell. I know he has been one of the ones pushing for this piece to have some of our vehicles be able to be charged here and then go out and do the work of the township during the day, and then the mixed use where the township residents could charge from it and then at night, you know, have a township vehicle get charged. So it's once again, an example of us making sure we are trying to do all we can to, to use clean renewable energy. So thank you, and please pass along a thank you to him as well.
Will, sir?
Great job, great job.
Thank you. Item number 10 would be a resolution that would authorize the purchase of goods or services in 2020 from the vendors of the listed cooperative purchasing organization. This resolution's approval would be pursuant to the conditions of each applicable vendor's contract with that purchasing co-op. On August 6th, 2019, a contract for electrical services was awarded pursuant to an appropriate bidding process to Sal Electric Company Incorporated of Jersey City. The contract was for a one-year term from August 7th of 2019 through August 6th of 2020, with two options for the township to renew for an additional one-year period per option. This vendor has performed in an effective and efficient manner, and as such, recommendation is made too, and this resolution would exercise the first one-year renewal option under the same terms and conditions for the period of August 7th, 2020 through August 6th, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Mr. Stafford, just a quick question on that. Do we foresee a bunch of different things that would require a lot of electrical use in the near future? I know we've had obviously some unexpected things, some, some damage, and I know there was flooding at the Town Hall at one moment and that required stuff that was unforeseen, but is it just to be able to have, have someone in case, or do we foresee some projects that you have that would require electrical services?
It would be both. Over the last calendar year, we suffered not only electrical problems at this building, but also at the Police Department. We had a major flood. We had, by the way, a pipe burst. We had the same thing happen at the Department of Community Services complex. So that is, those unforeseen difficulties arise routinely, sadly, and we need to have a licensed electrician on standby to handle those, but also handle the planned projects.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Manager, just a, I guess it might just be a typo, but on the certification of funds and on the memorandum, it says Sal Electric Company, and in the ordinance that or the resolution we're going to do, it says Sal. So I'm just checking, maybe a correction there, Sal Electric versus Sal's?
We can fix that.
It should be Sal's, I think. Thank you.
The correct name is Sal, singular.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Please, Councilwoman Price Abrams.
So I know nothing, and I assume nothing is at all flawed in any way with the work of this particular contractor. I'm just wondering if we have, in the past, enlisted Montclair-based businesses for this kind of work and whether, I would assume perhaps they competed at the time in the past and we sought the lowest bid, or how is it that we, is there any consideration given to us trying to prioritize local businesses in this kind of arrangement?
However, given the dollar amount required, we are required to put this out to bid because we anticipate reasonably that it will be over the bid threshold, and once we do, we expose it to the universe at large, and this is the lowest responsible responsive bidder. As a matter of fact, in this instance, it, this, let me just see here, bear with me. When we put this out to bid in 2019, two companies bid, the incumbent and a business located in Keyport, New Jersey. Moving to item number 12, on June 26th of 2018, contracts for preventative maintenance and repair services of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems of all township buildings were awarded pursuant to an appropriate bidding process to TLP Climate Control Systems Incorporated of Millstone, New Jersey, and to Unitemp Incorporated of Somerset, New Jersey. The contracts were for two-year terms from July 1st of 2018 through June 30th of 2020, with an option for the township to renew for an additional one-year period per contract. These vendors have performed in an effective and efficient manner. As such, recommendation is made too, and this resolution would exercise the one-year renewal options under the same terms and conditions for the period of July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Similarly, on June 2 of 2020, two bids for repair and maintenance services for Montclair Police Department vehicles were received, opened, and reviewed. Based upon that analysis, recommendation is made too, and this resolution would authorize the award of a contract to the lower responsible responsive bidder, Montclair Motor Works, of course, of Montclair, to provide the required services, and the contract also to Performance Ford of East Hanover, New Jersey, as a secondary service provider should Montclair Motor Works be unable to provide service. And of course, that sometimes happens. If they are unable to, for whatever reason, we can go to the second service provider, and these contracts would be each for two-year periods with an option for the township to renew for an additional one-year period per contract under the same terms and conditions. The total not-to-exceed amount for both contracts per budget year would be $80,000.
Mayor, Manager, again, just a quick question. I'm glad, as, as for what the Councilor Price Abrams is saying, it's good to see a local, local vendor, right? Just wanted to ask again, the $80,000 is not a contract just with Motor Works. It's the total that either one, we might spend with either one, or total for two?
The $80,000 would be the not-to-exceed amount in the aggregate.
In the aggregate, not just for Motor Works. Thank you.
You bet. Lastly, for me, with respect to the agenda, applicants, item 14, applicants for development projects are required to deposit funds in escrow. The applicant for the project listed on Schedule A withdrew its application. All expenses against this account have been paid, and there appears to be no further basis to retain the escrow deposit listed thereon. This resolution would authorize the fund's release and would direct our Chief Financial Officer to issue a check for same to the applicable developer. And Mayor, that's all I have on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask some, Manager, just a quick question?
Absolutely. Council, Councilman Cummings, please.
After reading this packet over the weekend, so, Manager, is there any reason why we can't move on several of these tonight, particularly two through nine, 11, 12, and 14?
Well, I'll jump in.
Up to the chair.
Yeah, I'll jump in just to, to kind of give you history of it, and certainly doesn't preclude some of the pieces there. What we have traditionally done, and certainly would be the build of this body of how they'd want to proceed, is use the conference meeting for an opportunity, we all remember the time we could be in person, but even virtually here, to go over each of the items, to make sure we're asking the questions that we want to ask, making sure that while everyone receives this in advance, it's a chance to hear the answers and then view them, think about them, you know, come back at that next meeting. And then what we traditionally do is you will see all of these items on a consent agenda because we've talked about all of them, everyone's had a chance to think about them, further think about them as they've heard, whether it be a question from Councilman Russo or Price Abrams or all of us that we've asked throughout the process meeting, mull that over now and come back at the next meeting. If there was an item that, you know, was, was absolutely pressing and there was a financial reason or otherwise to pull it out, sometimes that happens, but generally, we try and allow for, try to allow for people a chance to look at it once, ask, ask the questions here, what other questions are asked, you know, think about that, and then come back at the next meeting, and then you will see all of these as a block. And then if there are, which then does happen, items which somebody wants pulled out because they've had that period to think about it, look into it, or whatever it may be, then that happens there. So it doesn't preclude us, again, as the Manager was just saying, from moving on any of these items. I mean, we, we almost could move on all items all the time, but we usually traditionally said, look, we've got the two meetings. One is a conference meeting, let's utilize the conference meeting to discuss things and vet them and think about them, and then use the second meeting to primarily pass these actions. So that's just been the history of it, and I would offer, it allowed for that, that thought process I just explained, and that was the rationale.
There may be times, there, there will be times where there is a pressing need for action on an item, and similar to the bills list tonight on the agenda, you'll see that I will have added it as an action item. If there's an issue that, that needs urgent attention tonight, you'll see it as an action item.
Can I, can I ask a question about, I don't know if you skipped number six, were we talking about? Five and six, or did we skip over those? I'm, I'm just not...
I addressed, I addressed items two through six as one item.
Oh, okay. I just want to ask for a clarification on number five, which is Historic Preservation Grant. Can you tell me what it's for? Is that just a general Historic Preservation Grant that goes to the Department, Planning Department folks, Historic Preservation Commission? What is it for, number five?
Truthfully, I, I don't have that information on hand. This is a grant application that the governing body already authorized some time ago. It has come in, it was not in, it was not able to be inserted into the budget reasonably because we didn't have the award from the state. Now we have it, and we, we are able to insert it as an appropriation and as a revenue. If you'd like the particulars, I can certainly have the Planning Department resend what was previously sent.
Yeah, I'm sorry to bother you with that. Just let me know what it was for again, but it's $23,000 that we got, and now it's being inserted. And then number six, I just didn't understand all the initials here, the NJACHOLHD, it's $43,000, is that to help us with coronavirus or?
Correct. That's the New Jersey Association of County and City Health Officials.
Oh, that's what that stands for, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, sorry.
Any other, all right, those are those items we've gone through. I will go around first to staff. Mr. Karasik, any, any comments you have, any comments?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anything?
No, sir. No, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stafford?
I do, Mayor. I am sad to have to relay that as of this evening, the official reports are that the confirmed number of COVID-19 cases in our township is 434, and that number includes 50 individuals who did not survive the illness.
Hmm.
Our mountainside initiating pools will open on Monday, July 13th, a week from yesterday. Pool hours will be 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. Given strict COVID-19 regulations, our pools will operate at a 50% capacity with mandatory social distancing. Given the occupancy restrictions, all patrons must be pool members and no daily passes or guests will be permitted this season. Membership rates given the shortened season are discounted. Again, given COVID-19 restrictions, pool and social distancing rules must be strictly followed. These can be found on our township website. Pool memberships will go on sale tomorrow, Wednesday, July 8th, via the Community Pass system that can be accessed by clicking www.communitypass.net. Members once registered can pick up their pool key fobs at municipal building starting tomorrow, July 8th at 10:00 AM, where an outdoor pickup location will be provided in the parking lot. Proof of identification and residency is required to pick up the key fobs. Our Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs is offering summer activities and sports for Montclair youth, including a baseball and softball batting and fielding challenge, a basketball skills and drills and shooting activity, and a summer fun activity program including theme days, games, team building activities, and more. Again, all programs will observe all required COVID-19 protective measures, including temperature checks and social distancing during activities. Participants must preregister for these programs via the Community Pass system, and if anyone has any questions specific to these programs or the pools, please call our Recreation Department at 973-509-4915. Residents are reminded that the County of Essex continues to offer drive-through nasal swab testing at We Quake Park every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Testing is provided free of charge to Essex County residents and no insurance is required. County residents with or without symptoms are encouraged to get tested. Appointments are required, and to make an appointment, please visit www.essexcovid.org or call 973-324-9950. Township residents are asked to complete their 2020 census form and to encourage others to do so as well. As of yesterday, the, I should say July 6th, the 2020 census self-response rates saw modest gains, with the state at 63.9%, Essex County at 56.3%, and our township coming in slightly ahead of the state and county again with 68.3%. All are urged to complete the 2020 census by phone, by mail, or online, and for more information, please see 2020census.gov. For updates on COVID-19 from the state, please visit this New Jersey COVID-19 Information Hub at covid19 nj.gov. Continues to be a one-stop shop for information relevant to COVID-19. I'd like again to point specifically within New Jersey COVID-19 Information Hub to the state's jobs and hiring portal found at jobs.covid19 nj.gov. Again, jobs.covid19 nj.gov. As of this afternoon, 52,964 jobs, 52,964 jobs with 1,034 different companies were posted. One seeking employment can search for jobs by industry, by location, and by other filters. General questions about COVID-19 may be posed by calling the state's Comprehensive Information and Referral Service by dialing 211. Medical questions about COVID-19 may be posed by calling the state's information line at These numbers are staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Importantly, New Jerseyans feeling the emotion, the emotional and mental toll of COVID-19 can get support from a special helpline. New Jersey Mental Health Cares, the state's Behavioral Health Information and Referral Service, is offering help to people dealing with anxiety and worry caused by or related to COVID-19. New Jerseyans can call 866-202-help, that is 866-202-4357, for free confidential support. This line is staffed from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week, by live trained specialists. This line is staffed from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 7 days a week by live trained specialists. You can visit the Township's COVID-19 section for updates on township operations during the crisis, that's on our website. If you have not signed up yet for the Township's Swift 911 Alert System, you are urged to do so now to receive township updates by blast. Sign-up form can be accessed from the Township's website's homepage, and you can also, of course, follow the Township's Facebook page, Montclair NJ USA, and the Township Twitter feed, @MontclairNJGOV. And lastly, mayor, I would like to take a moment to reiterate again my sincere gratitude to all of our township public health staff and Department of Community Services personnel, as well as our Public Safety Information Technology. You mentioned Mr. Fan earlier, mayor, he performed Herculean duties to set this meeting up today. Department of Utilities staff, Office of Emergency Management Personnel, and all other township personnel who have been working diligently around the clock to keep us safe, connected, and informed. I am grateful for our employees and for their efforts, and I continue to be appreciative of their dedication and proud to be a member of their team. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Mr. Scannellberry, did you have anything? I didn't hear you, Mr. Scannellberry, but I think maybe you're muted.
Oh, you can't hear me?
I got you now.
Okay, no comment, mayor.
Thank you very much. Now it's time for council comments. I'll go in order of the words and then at largest, so Deputy Mayor Herlock.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to say thank you to the township staff, Mr. Stafford, obviously our acting clerk here this evening, and also Mr. Scannellberry and Mr. Karasik for all that you've done, for what everyone has done during very difficult times on many different fronts. Thank you all for your service, and congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, for your first official meeting outside of the swearing-in. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you for that, sir. Very kind. Second ward, Councilwoman Schlegel.
Thank you, Mayor Spiller. I echo Mr. Herlock's sentiments, but I also want to thank the staff as well for the swearing-in ceremony. I know that everybody worked hard. It was a difficult day to navigate for so many reasons, and everybody did a terrific job, and I thank you very much for making it special for me and for my family, and also, I'm sure, for all my colleagues, and thank you to Governor Murphy for coming. That was pretty special. That was really great that he took the time out to come to our town and to swear in our mayor, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Third ward, Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Yes, I will say it's been very gratifying to be now on the sort of official side of our work, and I really do thank everybody who has helped me get to this place, and I look forward to really the continued service together, and again, acknowledgements of everybody. I do want to raise one question to the manager's report. So, Mr. Stafford, you did talk about the census, and it does seem that Montclair at least is doing better than other places, and we all know, and I'm sure our listeners are aware, that, you know, the dollars from the federal government will be tied to getting everybody there. And I will say that in driving, not that much lately, but driving to some local towns, I see some signage and things that are reminders of the importance of it, and I wonder if there may be anything that might not be too cost prohibitive that we might do to just help better publicize in, you know, different ways. It's on the website, of course, but not everyone does check there with the same frequency. If there's ways that we might just create more visibility around the importance of completing the census and, you know, providing whatever resource information we can, for consideration, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Certainly looking into that.
Yeah, Mr. Stafford, maybe there's also, I know, time to time, the governing body will consider the township, if there are mailings or other things that are going out for other reasons, maybe there's also material that can be included in those for any residents who gets whatever it is we're sending. They also get a reminder about the census, and to Councilman Price Abrams' point, if there's a way we can do more to publicize this around town, you know, we'd love to hear more about it at our future meetings, so thank you. With that, I'll go to Councilman Cummings.
Hey, everybody, yes, thank you so much. I think it's been an exciting few days since we all got together last. I'm very happy to be here, and I think, Sean, congratulations to you as mayor. I think you're in a position to, you know, keep things moving forward. In terms of just specifics, I'd say that I want to thank Lori for setting up a conversation with some young students regarding police. I think that that is a discussion that we will be following, we will be having a lot, and I think we need to be prepared for that. I think the young people are very engaged, and I think it's something that is, that's good for us. I would also say, I think I heard the seniors, I think that's been a conversation, I don't think anyone here is against, I think it's something we all support. I can remember back in 2008 when this conversation kind of started. And on a personal note, I like to say I was able to walk every block in the fourth ward before we all joined and together for the swearing-in last night, and I'm pleased to say that the streets pretty, looked pretty good. I'm very happy to know that, you know, I can say, I don't think many streets in the fourth ward needs to be done. Unfortunately, I can't say that for my own street because it got done, and it got done before I became councillor, so I have to admit to all of my fellow neighbors, no, it was not because of me that was already decided. But on a more serious note, manager, I do think that with the pools opening in the current environment, that staff, particularly the young adults who work, get trained to be prepared to deal with what they're going to have to deal with in turn of cleaning up, and, you know, they'll be working with a lot of young people. So I hope we have some training in place regards to that, and so with that, I think that's about all I have for now. But again, congrats to everybody, and I really look forward to working together as a team.
Thank you, Councilman, and I will just say that as thrilled as we all are with the number of streets we've been able to pave, I too am on a street, but my street has not been paved, so when I walk around, you know, my neighbors look around and say, wait a minute, you know, what does it take? So, you know, kudos to you, good work, you got yours done. With that, I'll go to Councilman Russo. That's what.
Yes, thank you, mayor and manager. I just want to go back to, I know it's like our work meeting, it's a conference meeting, we work, and I looked at number 10, just to refer back to number 10, which we had tonight, with purchasing contracts. I just want to get this all clear because it's 10 pages of all sorts of companies we can buy from without, apparently this is what we can do without advertising for bids, just to clarify again, and I think our employee, Kirsten Anshitz, Kirsten does a great job in purchasing, she's to be commended as an employee. Thank you, Kirsten, but just clear this up for me one more time because there's so many companies listed. Is there a limit, manager, on how much we can just, without advertising for bids, with this list that comes from a group called Omnia, I think it's Omnia Partners Private Sector Cooperative Pricing, it helps us get lower prices, right?
That's correct. You'll remember that at the turn of every year, usually in December for the coming year, you see as resolutions on the governing body's agenda upwards of a dozen purchasing cooperatives, as well as the New Jersey State Contract that allows the township to purchase by way of these purchasing cooperatives, which have negotiated in many instances the lowest possible contract price for goods. Frankly, we arbitrage among the purchasing cooperatives to get the lowest price, and if we think we can do better, we would go out to bid, but it does allow and afford the township the efficiency and economy in every instance.
Thank you. Just, mayor, just if I can say something again about the electric cost. I'm so happy we're moving this direction, but it was 2002 when we first got those natural gas vehicles, 18 years ago we first. Police Chief Russo at the time, and Manager Reedy and myself as mayor, started that effort to try to get us off of regular large vehicles that consume a lot of gas, so I'm hoping we're going to try to purchase many.
Am I the only one that lost, Councilman Russo, or?
I lost.
We seem to have lost his signal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's technology, we're not, none of us are immune to it, but certainly, I think, hopefully, I think we've kind of got the point that Councilman Russo was focusing on there with the electric vehicles and efficiencies, and certainly I can say that it has been a focus, we're happy to see what was on the agenda tonight, and also note that over the last number of years, we've gone to greener vehicles to use throughout the township with our fleet. So with that, I'm going to move forward. If Councilman Russo is able to join back on, he can certainly finish his comments. But with that, I'm going to go to Councilman Yacabales. Councilman?
Yes, I just want to echo what everyone else has said in terms of congratulations. Again, I'm appreciative of the time I've spent on the phone or in person meeting with all of you, really, so thank you for helping me in terms of becoming a new council person with the training we also did these first few weeks. Appreciate the calls and talks. To the citizens who participated tonight, you know, we heard you in terms of your questions and your requests for a senior center, for bike lanes, in terms of public safety with police reporting and small business support just related to COVID. We heard you, and those are things that we're continuing to work through. I want to commend the previous council, previous mayor, and of course, those of you on the current council who are part of the previous council. It's really a delight to be able to address some of these issues in our first couple weeks as a new council, things like school infrastructure, the Essex Hudson Rail Trail, and electric vehicle charging station. It's a delight to see items like those on the agenda, so thank you for all the work historically to get us to the point that we're at, where we're going to be able to cast votes in favor of moving some of those things forward, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm trying to come back on, can you hear me?
Thank you, Councilman Russo. Sure, I see, I think Councilman Russo's back on, and we heard, we heard up to, you know, you're talking about the electric vehicles and the fleet.
I was talking about Mount Carmel. One of the reasons I want, it's very timely, it's Mount Carmel Church, and, you know, Rafael Marzullo worked very hard over the years, he's tried to bring this whole thing to our attention. I want to clarify for everybody, I'm not related to Tom Russo, I'm not Tom Russo, if he writes letters to the paper, it's not me, I'm Bob Russo, but my family, my mother who passed in April, was so dedicated to that church, and we just read a couple of weeks ago in the paper that the church is closed. So I want to make an appeal again to the archdiocese and to the people who can save this church. Mount Carmel Church has been around for 90 years, I believe, Pine Street, it really is an institution for not only the Italian-American community, but so many others who live in that area. So I'm asking that we do whatever we could, Mayor Jackson worked so hard with Councilman Herlock, Councilman McMahon, all the different efforts with Rafael Marzullo and others, and former police chief Tom Russo. It's just a shame to read an article that said that the church is closed, whether it's they need a new boiler, they need something, the church has been raising money apparently through lots of efforts, and I just want to give a shout out to Rafael Marzullo again, they raised so much money, try to save the church, and then all the money's gone somewhere. And I'm a strong Catholic because my uncle was a priest, my mother was always dedicated to that church. I just want to make an appeal, help save Mount Carmel Church for this community. Thank you. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that, and certainly they do a lot of great things, so we commend them. Thank you for sharing that. And I will just simply say, you know, thank you to all of you for the, you know, the well wishes and the kind words, and to others out there, certainly I am as appreciative of Mayor Jackson and the work of the previous council, but I also want to say I'm really excited with this group. I think for the public, you're seeing us together now virtually, but knowing, as Councilman Yacabales said, the conversations that have to happen, the work that goes in to make sure things are moving, the information, making sure people are up to speed, they're ready, I see a group of committed individuals who are dedicated to this work, want to make sure the township has a strong representation, and, you know, that all voices are heard. So I want to say congratulations to all of you, whether returning or new, a job well done, certainly in our first meetings and our, and off to our start here. It was exciting for me as well. I know some of you noted the swearing-in with the governor, that was exciting, certainly, so thrilled with that. And then right away, you know, right to work, we know some incidents that happened here in town, things that had to be addressed, and we all know that just because we are Montclair, we're not immune from certain pieces, but because we are Montclair, we address them, we make sure we have the important conversations, and that's what really we're all about. So I just want to say a big thank you again to all of you, reemphasize the points that were made, to all those listening out there, please take part in the census, that's a huge deal right now. While we're at, I think Mr. Stafford said 68%, we all know we got to push to get that number even higher. As Councilman Cummings said, the conversations we're having in the community right now around policing and other pieces, let's keep having them, they're important conversations that we're having. As Councilman Yacabales said, all the other areas, people on this call, these are things that we're moving forward on, looking into, and we continue to work on. So that's our goal, to be effective and efficient in a lot of these different areas, and I think this team will help us do it. A big thank you, Mr. Stafford, to you and your team during these difficult times, continue to be. And the last thing I will say and close with is just, please, I ask all community residents to, please remain vigilant. We've all been in a situation where, you know, we've been, you know, isolating and distancing, we try not to emotionally distance. Thank you, Mr. Stafford, for sharing some of those numbers, if people need someone to talk to or a conversation that they need to have, that's important. But as we've been doing all those things, it's important we don't, as the governor noted, you know, really move in a direction where we see cases rising like in other states and other places, so let's be mindful of that, let's be smart about what we're doing, let's make sure we're following the best practices, and make sure we keep each other safe, and then by doing that, allow our businesses to slowly come back in a smart way, and we can support them. So everyone out there, I say thank you as well, and thank you for the work that we have to do together moving forward. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Move the second, and all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, everybody. Job well done, council. Thank you, guys.
Mayor.
Bye-bye, everybody.